... and wisdom and courage in our efforts as we labor to make decisions that affect the people we serve. Help us to govern with clean hearts and a right spirit. We try not to neglect your call, but we are very much aware of your forgiving grace. Forgive what we have been, amend who we are, and direct who we shall yet become. Fashion us in your little image and help us to do your will. In the name of the great Creator of life and beauty, we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Charles Evans is attending the meeting tonight by way of teleconference. I will make sure to ask him for his vote after each motion is made. First on our agenda is the recognition of outgoing board members, and I think we have, and retired county employees. Mr. King, I think you have two recognitions. Mr. Jimmy Kaiser, Board of Health.
Let me say that much of the work that goes on at the county level is done at the board within the various boards. And tonight, I have the great pleasure of recognizing one of our board members who is coming off the board in the person of Jimmy Kaiser. Jimmy, please come forward. Jimmy has been on the board for a while. He has served in various leadership positions over the years and has truly done an outstanding job. Jimmy is with the... I just want to recognize you for outstanding dedication and service on the Board of Health from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. And I can honestly say, as a person who serves on that board, Jimmy puts put a lot of time into it, put a lot of work and effort into it, and we won't miss him.
Thank you, sir.
Dorothy McNeil, Department of Public Health. She's not here with us, but Buck Wilson is here with us. So Buck, would you come up here and receive this on behalf of Ms. McNeil? This is a plaque presented to Dorothy McNeil. Did you make sure you guessed it right? Yes, sir. Okay, all right. I should... I made out a assumption, right?
I might hang them off.
Okay, okay. Buck is in charge over there, so I made the assumption that he would get it to her. But anyway, Dorothy McNeil, Cumberland County Department of Public Health, in recognition of outstanding service to citizens of Cumberland County, January 3, 1984, January 1, 2014, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, and please express to her our appreciation for her service.
I will. Thank you, sir.
We'll take a picture, anyway. Okay. I just created a new room. Thank you.
The next retired employee will be recognized by Commissioner Fairclough, Mr. Eugene Daniels.
Before I introduce Mr. Daniels and recognize him for his great service to our county, I'd like to just take a quick personal note to tell you what something about probably what the spouse or the children of a person who every day puts his life on the line to protect citizens, how they feel. Got a little taste of that today, as I've had many times in the past. Most of you that know me know my son is a Raleigh police officer. Today, I'm watching the news, and there's a head-on collision where an officer is hurt in a wreck. And I didn't know any of the circumstances. First thing I did was get on the phone to my son. I can't get him, you know, and that's just an awful feeling just to begin with. And finally, I get that little call back and just breathe a sigh of relief. So to an individual who has spent a career putting his life on the line for the citizens and has now reached a point that we celebrate, that great service, I'd like to call forward Mr. Eugene Daniels. Sergeant Eugene Daniels, ask your wife to come up with if you will. Okay. Eugene, once again, we thank you for your fine service to our county. And on behalf of the citizens of Cumberland County, I would like to present this plaque to you in recognition of your service from August 9, 1983, to January 1, 2014, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, this 17th day of February, 2014.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Smile, please, please.
No, sir, I'm fine.
Okay, this is yours. All right. Thank you, sir. Thanks so much. He doesn't want to say anything, but we will.
No, we're good. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
agenda today is a resolution joining all North Carolinians proclaiming the month of February as Human Relations Month. And it is entirely fitting and was not planned that our two speakers today fit in perfectly with that proclamation. We live in one of the most diverse counties in the state, and so we were proud to join with the other counties to proclaim this month Human Relations Month, the month of February, 2014. It is also Heart Month, and it is also the month of love and whatever else you want to proclaim it. But and remember your hearts and remember your love, but we are proclaiming it tonight, Human Relations Month also, all right? Madam Clerk?
We have two speakers for our public comment period. Our first speaker is Ms. Belinda Davis.
Ms. Davis, welcome.
Thank you. I feel very honored. I'm pleased to see all of the folks that I've seen kind of renewed some acquaintances. But I'm here because of Human Relations Month. I'm glad that that declaration has come about. I'm here to present a book to the chairman of the commissioners, but it is for all of the commissioners. This book is entitled Americans Forgotten Cast: Free Blacks in Antebellum, Virginia and North Carolina. It is written by a Fayetteville native, Rodney Barfield, some of you may know. And I love this book. It tells a magnificent story, and indeed, it is all of our story. But just a few words about it, though free, these proud people were often excluded from political process, from education, and from most professions. But many became preachers, teachers, missionaries, artisans, contractors, boat captains, and wealthy entrepreneurs. Thomas Day and Aquila Wilson fell in love. Day lived in North Carolina and was free. Wilson lived in Virginia and was free, but could not cross the state line to reside in North Carolina with her husband. It took an act by North Carolina's General Assembly to allow her to do that. So she came to North Carolina and with her husband left a proud heritage which we all can enjoy still to this day. The history of America would be incomplete without the story and stories of these brave Americans. This book is their story. This is to be kept, I understand, in the chairman's library for use by all commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker is a young lady named Christina Butler with her teacher, Charlene Gibbs, and her principal, if she will tell me the name of her principal when she comes to the podium, please.
Dr. Benson, Thomas Benson.
I can't hear you.
Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. And which school?
Westover High School.
I understand that this young lady is an award winner, and she's won all kinds of awards with her poetry. So, Ms. Butler?
Hello, my name is Christina Butler. I'm from Westover High School, and I will be reciting Phenomenal Woman by Dr. Maya Angelou. Pretty women wonder where my secret lies. I'm not cute or built to suit a fashion model size, but when I start to tell them, they think I'm telling lies. I say it's in the reach of my arm, the span of my hips, the stride of my step, the curl of my lips. I'm a woman, phenomenally, phenomenal woman, that's me. I walk into a room just as cool as you please, into a man that fell astray or fall down on their knees. Then they swarm around me. I have a honeybee. I say it's the fire in my eyes and the flash of my teeth, the swing in my waist and the joy in my feet. I'm a woman, phenomenally, phenomenal woman, that's me. Men themselves have wondered what they see in me. They try so much, but they can't touch my inner mystery. When I try to show them, they say they still can't see. I say it's in the arch of my back, the sun of my smile, the ride of my breasts, and the grace of my style. I'm a woman, phenomenally, phenomenal woman, that's me. Now you understand just why my head's not bowed. I don't shout or jump about or have to talk real loud. When you see me passing, it ought to make you proud. I say it's in the click of my heels, the bend of my hair, the palm of my hand, and the need of my care, because I'm a woman, phenomenally, phenomenal woman, that's me. Thank you so much for having me.
Ms. Butler has been praised widely for her reading of Maya Angelou's poetry. As you know, Maya Angelou is a noted black author. She has spoken at inaugurations, and she lives, I believe, in Winston Salem, North Carolina. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Ms. Davis. Thank you for the book. It was right on time, right on target, all right? Thank you so much, all of you. Now, I failed to mention that this is also Red Cross Month. I forgot about that. American Red Cross Month. Don't forget about that one, too. Mr. Manager, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept a motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. Item two...
Chairman, Council, could we get Commissioner Evans?
Oh, Commissioner Evans, I forgot. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do you vote for the...
Yes, for approval.
Thank you so much. For the consent agenda, are there changes to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Those in favor? Mr. Evans?
Approve.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Public hearings.
Item three is a public hearing, case 1401, rezoning of 2.29 acres from A1 Agricultural to R40 Residential located at 3235 John McMillan Road, submitted by James R. Seals owner and Timothy Evans, Mr. Lloyd.
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying that the two meetings, Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners, last month were on the same night, so I brought with me Patty Spiker, Section Chief of Land Use Codes, who handled the Planning Board meeting in case there's questions I can't answer. But in this particular case, there is no opposition, and the Planning Board recommended unanimously to approve the request.
All right. Thank you. Are there questions about this case? Mr. Moorfield?
Yes, Madam Chair, if you see fit, I'd recommend that you do that as two motions, one to approve the consistency statement, consistency and reasonable statement, and the other to approve the action of the Planning Board.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the reasonable statements in this case.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt and approve the reasonably stated statement and find the request consistent with the LUP and approve the R40. Are there any questions?
No.
No speakers?
And there were no speakers?
Yes, that's correct. Just the consistency statement first.
All right. I believe I need to open the public hearing and close the public hearing and then entertain the motion, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I think I got all mixed up.
I jumped again.
I'm going to open the public hearing, no speakers. I'm going to close the public hearing. I'll hear the motion again, please.
Madam Chair, forgive me, I jumped again. I move that we adopt and approve the reasonable statement and find the request consistent with the land use plan and approve R40.
It's got to be two separate motions.
Yes, two separate motions. All right. The first motion is to adopt and approve and find the request consistent. Those in favor? Mr. Evans?
Approve.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Fairclough?
I move that we approve the staff recommendation and approve R40.
Second.
Second, all right. There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions? If not, those in favor? Mr. Evans?
Approve.
All right.
Unanimous.
All right. Case P1350.
Yes, ma'am. This is a request, MP to MP, conditional zoning to allow ammunition remanufacturing, assembly, and distribution. A brief history of this. A little over a year ago, well, 14 months ago, this board approved the rezoning request from MP to R20. So this was actually MP to begin with, I believe it was initially zoned MP. The applicants asked for R20, and they were granted R20. They came in for a home occupation so that they could then do the use that's being requested on a limited basis, which again is ammunition reloading, remanufacturing. So they had a home occupation and then decided they'd like to rezone it back to MP so that they could do this full-scale operation, which in all actuality, the staff at that time would have worked with them, and they could have done it in the zoning that it was prior to last December. Now, at the Planning Board meeting, well, I'll go through this. The subject's shown in the subject property, and it's a little over one and a third acres. And current zoning in the area is also MP to the north, to the east, MP planned industrial, RR and R10 residential to the south and to the west. So actually, the zoning is separated by Snow Hill Road. Now, when they first got the home occupation, again, there was some concern by citizens across Snow Hill Road. I know Commissioner King received some calls, and at that time, I explained to him that they had a home occupation, which was legal to do this activity. The land use shows that, one, is eastern freight in purple manufacturing, and, two, is a quarry, and then yellow shows single-family housing. It's aerial view of the subject property. Okay, this is a detailed site plan of what was presented to the Planning Board. And you can see, and this site plan is difficult to see, actually, that there's actually three structures, proposed stories, proposed assembly, and a smaller existing assembly which has been built, although not permitted, so it's not in use at this time. It's standing, but it hasn't received all its permits. They decided to come back in. So when this went to the Planning Board, the staff recommended denial for a couple reasons. First is overbuilding of the site. As you can see, there's three proposed buildings. Well, the Planning Board, I'm sorry, let me back up. The Planning Board was ready to deny this, but then said, "Go back and bring it back as a conditional zoning," which the applicants did. So the Planning Board was actually leaning toward granting this until the meeting last month. And there was two main objections the Planning Board had. One was overbuilding of the site, which is the same as the staff had. The other objection was that the airport manager thought it would be detrimental to the airport operations. But we received a call from the airport manager after the Planning Board meeting and says he's really backing up from that, that after looking at what was being proposed and reanalyzing it, he doesn't have an objection to it. The reason I'm going into this is because before the meet, prior to this meeting, the applicant asked if it would be possible to go back and work with the staff. Now, again, the staff's problem was overbuilding of the site and the airport, and so was the Planning Board's problem. Well, the airport problem's apparently resolved. And all I want to say is the Planning Board recommended unanimously to deny this based on, I believe I'm speaking, mostly on the airport director's opposition. So I'm going to say is the applicant's going to stand up here and probably ask that they be allowed to send, work with the staff. And all I'm going to say is the staff at this point, I guess this staff and that staff, don't have a problem in working with them because we can resolve the overbuilding issue, number one. Number two, it was MP originally to begin with, they probably could have done what they want to do. And three, the main reason the Planning Board went against it is no longer an issue. But I am up here to defend the decision the Planning Board made, which was to deny it based on the information they had.
Without objection.
You have any idea how confusing that was?
I'll make it real easy.
Please do.
The airport director was against this, and now he's not. The overbuilding of the site could have been done with the staff, but when we dealt with the airport...
What is overbuilding?
There's three buildings on the site that probably should have one.
Yeah. Probably should. What is the zoning? What is the zoning for MP or residential?
The zoning right now is R20 residential.
So you can't have three buildings on it?
They haven't approved site plan for two buildings, isn't it? Well, three structures that were residential, not as large as this. We couldn't turn down the group development review.
We approved this as residential 14 months ago.
Yes, we did.
Is there a building on there right now?
There's one building on the site showing where the cursor is, the smaller building, although it hasn't received a final inspection. It's only received the slab inspection so far.
Is that a house?
That's what it was initially permitted for.
It's a residential house?
Yes.
Yeah, come on.
But it hasn't received a final inspection.
Tom, are you asking that this not come to us tonight and get tabled to go back to the Planning Board?
What I'm, I'm not asking anything the applicant can ask for, what they want. I'm saying that the staff at this point, if they ask to come back and work with the staff, in light of the fact that the airport director is no longer against it, I don't have a problem with them, working with them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, someone else? Mr. Edge?
Mr. Lloyd, I assume, like any other case, the residents within so many feet were notified of this?
Yes, sir.
Conditional use?
Correct. And there was no opposition at the Planning Board, and I don't believe there's any opposition tonight.
Thanks, sir.
I'm trying to decide if we need to hear from the petitioner, or is it within our right to just send it back to the planning?
You would need to hear from the petitioner, but I think he's already asked that. May I ask a couple of questions to clarify some of these issues? Because I was not at this planning board either. This was when the delayed meeting after the Martin Luther King holiday. Tom, do I understand what you're saying now is that this proposal actually complies with MP zoning? The setbacks and stuff are now, it does comply?
No, but the conditional zoning would take care of that.
Okay, so it's only because of making it conditional zoning that you're going to...
But it does comply with an approved group development review.
But residential?
Right, but the setbacks were still handled for residential, not for industrial.
But we mentioned things up here. I understand that what was approved was for a residential structure that would have met the residential setbacks, but my understanding in the earlier discussion, this by the Planning Board, was that the, what's proposed now does not meet the setbacks. Is that correct or not?
When this was rezoned to R20, there was a group development review the staff did for residential. It met the setbacks for residential. That was back in, not long after the rezoning, August, actually, it was August of 2013. They've come back with these three structures as an MP conditional zoning, which it would not meet the MP setbacks.
That's what I was trying to get at.
So it's building the site if it's MP. And I should make it clear, it wasn't overbuilding for residential because it met the residential setbacks. MP setbacks are a lot greater.
Okay.
But in defense of the Planning Board, they made their decision based mostly on the testimony of the airport manager.
Mr. King?
Tom, let me see if I got this. With the zoning in place right now, there is a problem with it for MP.
With the zoning that's in place now, R20, they can do a home occupation.
No, I asked the question wrong. I'm sorry. Can the MP zoning, the setback is a problem?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I want to know. And what you're saying is that the airport manager had a problem with it at one time, but he didn't have a problem with it anymore. However, the setback issue is still there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's all I want to know, right there.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if you're, to answer your question, can you send this back? If the petitioners, if the petitioners talked to you and said they do want to work with staff and try to resolve this, is that correct, Mr. Lloyd?
Right, and he could get up there and state that, but again, and I know you know this, this board still has a right to file the Planning Board's recommendation and deny.
Yes, sir, I understand, but I mean, the specific question the chair asked was whether or not the board...
He has to ask.
And I'm asking you, did he, has he had that conversation with you? If you called him up here... If you call him up here, is that what he's going to say?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, Madam Chair, I hope that explains if you...
But I believe he still has to get up here and say it.
All right, but I ask, I'd ask that the petitioner stand and request that, make that request, please.
Yes, ma'am. He has to make the request. I am not requesting that.
Jesus.
The petitioner, she's asking what the petitioner wants.
All right, I have an open public hearing. All right. I need to open the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on case P-1350. Are there speakers?
We have two speakers signed up in favor. Our first speaker is Mr. Tim Evans.
Good evening, county commissioners and staff. My name is Tim Evans. I reside at 2256 Cypress Lakes Road. I am the previous owner of this piece of property. I bought it as a spec piece of property considering that it was halfway between 95 and the airport. One thing that I think the commissioners need to take in consideration with this piece of property is, Snow Hill Road was redelined before I bought the piece of property. So the piece of property at one time had enough to meet all setbacks, but DOT relined Snow Hill Road and cut part of the property away from the mother piece. And I still own the piece adjacent to it, which is useless, okay? Now, in his defense, I will say this, and I don't want to take up much time. Being a real estate broker, I was approached by the Jones. The piece was not on the market. They approached me and wanted to build a house there. And I just explained to them at that intersection and with the trucking terminal behind it, that I didn't think it was a wise decision. And I mean, they said, "Tim, we really like that spot because it's close to 95 and we like it." So they proceeded on, and what they were wanting to build there originally was a California-style industrial house that was predominantly metal. They went to an architect, had it drawn out, no appraiser in federal would touch it. They were pre-approved for $400,000 plus to build this home. And as Tom said, they were going to operate their business there behind it, and they could do that under certain regulations. Well, as they began dabbling with the piece of property, they come to the conclusion that they had made the wrong mistake in rezoning it with a trucking terminal behind it, with a truck leaving every 20 minutes. And then they decided to go back for rezoning, and they had put up that building. So it's really, as all y'all have seen, it's really odd, but I think considering that piece of property was split and it was on the MP, you know, that hurts meeting the setbacks on it. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Our second speaker in favor is Mr. Huxley Jones.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Huxley Jones. I reside at 536 Brownwood Gate Drive, Hope Mills, North Carolina, 28348. I have talked with the planning staff prior to the meeting, and I do ask that this issue is taken back to the planning staff to rework it and bring it forward to the council at a later date.
All right, Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other speakers, I will close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Ma'am Chairman, I'll for motion that this item be returned to the planning board.
Second. All right, Mr., are there questions about the motion? Mr. Evans, question?
Planning staff, I'm sorry.
No.
Planning staff. All right. Those in favor of the motion? Mr. Evans?
Against.
All right. That's unanimous.
Voting, he voted against.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So voting in favor were Commissioners Melvin, Edge, Chairman Council, Commissioners Faircloth, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Evans.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Evans. I didn't hear you. All right. Thank you. Item four, Mr. Manager.
Item four is consideration of approval of the jail health medical plan as outlined in NC General Statute 153A-225. Mr. Wilson's health director, I think, is here to perhaps answer any questions the board may have. I would just say that I've recently learned, after a long career without this knowledge, that there's a requirement that the jail medical plan be approved annually by the Board of Commissioners, and that is to be approved in, by the, or prepared by the Health Department and in consultation with the Sheriff's Office. And so because I have never brought this issue to you for your approval, and that certainly was in error by my failure to do that, I would ask you this evening to consider approving the document as we have presented it to you. There are some proposed changes that the Sheriff's Legal Advisor has come up with of late, and I think my request to you would be approve what we've given you. Let's get that part done and meet the requirement, and then come back with the, with the other amendments at an appropriate time.
All right.
Thanks for having me. So the plan, as Mr. Martin said, is reviewed annually by the Health Director, the Medical Director, and the Medical Doctor at the jail. So every year, we have to go through the review of the plan, and then it's required to be adopted by the governing body. So I'll tell you a little bit about the plan. It's policies and procedures that cover health screening of inmates upon admission, handling routine medical care, handling of inmates with chronic illnesses or known communicable diseases, administration, dispensing and control of prescription, non-prescription medications, handling emergency medical problems, maintenance and confidentiality of medical records, and privacy during medical examinations and conferences. So those are seven items that are part of state statutes that have to be in the plan. I went through and counted, it's 356 pages electronically. So there's a whole bunch more in the plan than just those seven items, but those seven items are indeed addressed in there. We work very closely with the sheriff's staff at the jail, meet quarterly to discuss issues, as well as daily to look at the changes that would need to be made. So we will be making plans, or excuse me, changes to this plan on a regular basis, and we can come back at any point in time to, you know, have y'all adopt it whenever y'all want.
All right. Mr. King?
Ma'am Chairman, I wanted to ask the attorney, our county attorney, if he has had time to review this document.
No, sir. It's just been a matter of the timing of when it actually came forward from the Health Department in the last two, three weeks, and the amount of time that we haven't been here and other issues, but I have not.
Okay. Mr. Edge is next, and then Mr. Keith.
Buck, am I understanding this correctly, that we have not had a plan?
We've always had a plan for years and years and years. For accreditation, you're required to have a medical plan. We have a very comprehensive plan, and every year, it is reviewed and required by statute to be reviewed by the Health Director, and it's done so. We also have the Medical Director and Medical Doctor review it. So we definitely have a plan. It's been in place for years. This is the first time, in my knowledge, and I don't know if it happened before Mr. Martin, that it would be adopted by the county commissioners, as opposed to approved annually by the Health Director.
I'm not sure there's ever been approved by the Board of Commissioners, not in 20 years on this.
I'm just trying to understand. In the past, it's just been approved by the Health Director?
Correct.
Why all of a sudden is this coming to us, then? Is that general statutes?
Yes, sir. In 2011, Mr. Moorefield recommended that we get that before the commissioners. We sent it to the Sheriff's Office. We've been working on it, working on it, working on it. We had a meeting at some point in time, y'all may remember, where we had all these items that we wanted to work on and get those done, and we got those done, got it put in the plan. So the plan is a work in progress, but it's the best it's ever been at this point.
Okay. I recognize Mr. Keith, then I recognize me.
Okay. Mr. Wilson, so you tell me that there has been changes all along to this annually that you do it. So you don't see any, any big issue with approving it as it is now and then working with the Sheriff's Department in the future on that?
Not at all. We work with them regularly.
Madam Chair, I don't want to jump the gun, but I make a motion we approve.
Second.
All right, and that was my question also. I wanted, next time, let me ask my question.
I went draw my second, Ms. Chair.
That was my question also, my concern, that it be in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department. Mr.?
Yes, if we approve it tonight, Sheriff's Department can look at it and bring their findings that they need to change back to this board at any time.
Yes, sir, they wouldn't even have to come back to this board. They'll let me know, I'll make the changes, and then y'all can adopt it annually if you like, or whatever the management would prefer.
Okay. But if we've got to approve it, if it's changed...
You only have to adopt it as often as you would like.
It's a requirement to be adopted annually. So if you approve it tonight, prove what you have before you tonight, then changes can be made. It'll come back to you next year, they will incorporate those changes, plus other changes that may be made.
All right. Mr. King?
Ma'am Chairman, fellow commissioners, it just seems reasonable to me that we would have our county attorney to review this document before we took action on it. I don't see any rush to do it. We've never done it before, and if we have some additional responsibilities, et cetera, I would hope that our attorney would have time to look it over. I mean, it sounds like, I understand what you're saying, Buck, but there are responsibilities that are in the Sheriff's Department area, and there are county issues as well, and we want to make sure that everything is clear there.
All right. Mr. Evans, do you have questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but if I heard Commissioner King correctly, before going along with approval of this medical plan, that before we do it, we have everything in place before, and it comes, and it will come back to us with the final corrections or necessary changes before we approve such a plan, so that we all will be in sync with each other. Is that what I'm understanding, Commissioner King?
That's correct.
I agree with you all heartily.
All right. Does this put us in violation of something?
I suppose it does, but I'll ask the attorney.
The, this document itself indicates it was prepared initially in 2009. It is the plan that the County Health Department Medical Unit has been providing at the jail since at least 2009. It is a requirement also that the Health Director approve it annually, and the Health Director has done that. It just, the component that has been left out is the Board of Commissioners' adoption of it. There is, it's the same plan that we've used for a number of years.
Madam Chair, this time I'd like to restore my second to the motion.
Restore your second.
I withdrew my second earlier, now restore. From this point on, it should be discussion on the motion.
All right.
Which is to approve the plan.
All right. Are you calling a question on this motion?
No, no, no. Let me clarify. I withdrew my second when you gave me the eye. And I withdrew my second, so that you could speak, and then that raised other questions. And so now I have restored my second, so at this point, we're open for discussion on the motion.
All right.
I'll pay.
All right. Now, is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, are we ready to vote? Those in favor of the motion?
Which is?
Which is to approve the jail health plan.
Approve the jail health plan.
Without our attorney looking at it.
Without our attorney looking at it. Approve it tonight.
Approve the jail health plan.
All right.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Let me make sure I understand this correctly. So we're planning on moving forward with approving what's being presented to us tonight, and then it would in turn go back for any amendment, or any adjustments, or any changes whatsoever, it come back to us?
Yes.
To correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
As I understand it, it would come back to us, the changes could be made, and when it comes back to us in 2015, then the changes would be made and we would approve it again. That's as I understand it. Changes can be made to the plan at any time.
That's correct, Madam Chair. Let me clarify that. It could come back to you next month. I mean, if there's some, if subsequent changes are made to you, made to the plan, the Health Director can bring it back at any time. It just has to be approved by the board at some point.
Who initiated the changes?
It would, that's an ongoing discussion right now between the Health Department and Sheriff's Office.
And there are other parties, too, mental health, behavioral health. There are a lot of other parties that we consult with throughout the year. And we don't just do it right before it's supposed to be approved. We do it all year long, on a daily, weekly basis when there's change that need to be made. And there's only seven, the only, the seven items I mentioned were the items that are covered. The 356 pages, there's only a few pages that address that in particular.
All right. Mr. Evans, do you understand?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
Do you understand the motion, or having a further...
I, I believe I do. With the question that I asked, I think I do understand that it was, we would approve it, and if it, and the necessary changes, is what I understand, even including as early as next month, that it could come back to us for changes or amendments. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think I understand.
Seeing no other questions, hearing no other questions, those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin, Edge, Faircloth, Keith. Voting in opposition, Chairman Council, Commissioners King...
And Commissioner Evans.
And Commissioner Evans.
All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Update on the Mental Health Services. Mr. Martin?
Mr. Legowski, I think, is here to have some opening comments, and then perhaps there may be other speakers, I believe.
Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Mental Health Clinic. With me here this evening is Dr. Sam Fleishman. Dr. Fleishman serves as the Medical Director for Behavioral Health Services at Cape Giraffe Valley and for the Mental Health Clinic. And also with me is Mr. Doug Webster. Doug serves as the Administrative Director for all of our behavioral health systems throughout the health system, and also for the Mental Health Clinic, and has been one of the driving forces behind all of the successes I'm going to talk with y'all about tonight.
And who else is with you?
Oh, and I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that Dr. Brean Blackwell, who's with the health system and his government affairs relationship position is with us here tonight.
Thank you.
Former Commissioner.
I'm really excited to be here tonight to tell you about a very unique collaboration. As you all know, you've been extraordinarily supportive of this. Cumberland County, the Cape Giraffe Valley Health System, the Alliance MCO, as well as local law enforcement, perhaps most importantly, local law enforcement, have all come together to really try to get our arms around one of the most significant healthcare issues we have in our community, and that's, that's lack of access and lack of services for mental health here in Cumberland County. And before I start to talk a little bit about this, again, on behalf of the collaboration, I want to thank the entire Board of Commissioners. Your support has been outstanding. Former Chair of the Cumberland County Commissioners, Jimmy Keith, and current Chair, Jeanette Council, as well as County Manager, James Martin. Your push and then support to make this happen has just been remarkable. Quite honestly, I think without your lack of push and then support, I'm not sure we'd be where we are today with this. So if you would, let me talk a little bit about where we are and what we've been doing. I want to thank Mr. Buck Wilson because he was tremendous in the transition as Cape Giraffe Valley became responsible for the clinic July 1st... responsible for the clinic July 1st of 2013. Let me tell you what's happened since then. I'll talk about what we're doing now, and then I'll talk about some of the things that we're going to do. And I'll ask Dr. Fleishman and Doug to also talk about what this means to services here in the community. Total patient encounters since the collaboration have increased by more than 45 percent, more than 45 percent through January of 2014. New patient evaluations have increased by more than 68 percent, just a dramatic increase in the access of services. One of the more important immediate steps was the expansion of the walk-in capabilities. Because of resources, the, in Jan, in July, the walk-in services only went from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Well, as everyone knows, folks who are having a mental health crisis don't have the ability to schedule, right? They need access and service today, now. So we've been very proud that since July, we've expanded greatly. We're open all day long, and very soon we'll expand this into the weekends and evenings so that folks experiencing a mental health crisis or a need will have a, have a place other than the emergency department or our jail to seek services. You know, and too often, we focus almost extensively, we talk about behavioral health, on adults. Well, we're here to tell you that pediatric services are just as important, and unfortunately, lack of access is rampant there also. But, but let me tell you a little bit about what's happened. In mid-November, in mid-November, we moved children's services out of the Bradford site and over to the main campus at Cape Fear Valley. And the goal there was to separate children's services from the severely mental, mentally ill. Children's services in terms of therapy have increased by more than 51 percent through January. Again, a tremendous expansion. Also, our services now expanded to the Child Advocacy Center, where the clinicians are actually providing services one full day a week at the Child Advocacy Center. We are now only one of six facilities in North Carolina that is receiving highly specialized training in parent-child interaction therapy. This is very important for severely disturbed children from ages three to six. And again, we're only one of six facilities in the entire state. Also, in December, we were selected to be the mental health provider for the Cumberland County School System. This happened in December. Again, trying to provide access where the children are. And, and this has been a huge success. Our Pharmacy Medication Assistance Program, PMAP, we're full of acronyms. So, so PMAP is an effort to provide medications for folks who really need medications right then and there. In the, in the previous disjointed system, individuals who would receive care, receive therapy, but needed medications, often had to go to multiple sites to get authorization, to get the medications. And we're here to tell you that 60 percent of those individuals didn't get the medications that they needed. Not because of a system that didn't want to provide those services, but, but just because the services were so disjointed. So now, the physicians, the staff are able to provide those services in the forms of samples, and then in a few days, be able to get their full prescriptions. So now, 60 percent of people who need those, those prescriptions are able to take those medications right away, which as you can imagine, dramatically reduces the amount of readmissions that those individuals, that those individuals face. So, what's, what's happened very recently, in the last few weeks, we have greatly expanded the Roxy Avenue site. You're well aware of the Roxy Avenue site. It's a two-story building right next to the main medical center. The first floor has historically housed a 16-bed detoxification unit. The second floor has been completely redone. And again, thank you for all the resources and the funding to do that. I don't think the health system would have been able to do all of the modifications we needed if it was not for the, for the Commissioners. What's happened up there is we've relocated the Mental Health Center to the second floor, so scheduled appointments. That walk-in center is also located there. And starting February 3rd, so it's already been opened, February 3rd, we opened what we're calling a 23-bed observation unit, right? So there's nine beds, chairs if you will, that are available. It's, and I'll let Dr. Fleishman talk more about this in a second, but it gives patients an opportunity in their first two, three, four, up to 23 hours, to be stabilized by whatever therapy, medication, other kinds of therapies, so that perhaps we can avoid an admission. And, and that has started what we're calling a soft opening. We purposely planned for a two-to-three-week soft opening of that observation unit to make sure that we've got all the right security provided by the Sheriff's Department, that we've got all the right processes and protocols in place. And we've begun seeing patients as of February 3rd. And we expect that that soft opening will end in another week or two, and then we'll begin to provide those services on a much more robust basis. So, I hope you agree that what you're hearing is that this collaboration is allowing us to serve tremendously larger number of people here in Cumberland County. Your, your ability to allow this to happen has really allowed us to expand services both on the adult side and on the, and on the pediatric side. And I don't know if Dr. Fleishman or Doug, you want to give some perspective on what you're seeing. Please.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak as well. And as Mike said, you know, the opportunity to try to, try to create this and consolidate these services in this community, I think was really a great, is a great opportunity, and I think a great opportunity. And as Mike said, that healthcare system is a hugely fragmented healthcare system. And the more we can integrate this, integrate this and make it more efficient and effective with limited resources, we have to take that opportunity. And this was an opportunity, I think, to, to make that happen. And as Mike said, is moving, moving the services from Bradford Avenue to Roxy, just moving the Mental Health Clinic there, along with having Roxy, having the detox unit and crisis stabilization, the 23-hour unit, really has allowed us to provide a whole spectrum of services in that one unit where people can walk in and not have to go to the emergency department and wait hours on end, and just load up in the ED and wait to be served. Not everybody can certainly be served by this unit, but certainly it's another portal to treat patients and an opportunity to see them more quickly and efficiently who are in mental health crises, or having mental health problems. So it really, even the first few patients we've seen in that crisis evaluation stabilization unit, the 23-hour unit, clearly, these were people that would have been in the ED, would possibly could have been hospitalized. We were able to take care of, stabilize, and treat, and send, some of them sent home, some get hospitalized quickly to another level of care and relatively ease. So it really is an opportunity to, to help maybe get some of these folks that don't need to be in the emergency department, maybe get served, to serve at any of the appropriate level of care. So, can't say more about that.
Are there questions?
I'd like to ask questions. Sam, if you or Mike. One of the things that we realized, I see Hank Devlin out here, who taught me what CIT was before I could spell it. And we have come a long way. And one of the things that we recognized at the beginning was, there was a tremendous amount of resources and frustration that was happening, not only in our emergency department, but also in our jail, by not having a facility like this. In this, in this short time that you've been able to start really seeing people, clients, do you believe that some of these people would have been taken by law enforcement, possibly to the jail or to the ED for treatment, instead of coming in there, getting the treatment they need, and, and helping, being with their families to get out of there?
I mean, clearly, there have been people that would have been in the emergency department that were served in the, on that service, or even in the walking clinic, the Mental Health Clinic now. Because now, with the Mental Health Clinic, you know, before, when the Mental Health Clinic was at Bradford, if somebody needed subacute detox, or was in a crisis, needed facility-based crisis, they still had to get across town to Roxy or to the inpatient unit. Now, if they're in crisis downstairs, or they see them in the clinic, they walk them across the hall. You know, we have a physician that's in the Mental Health Clinic that can give orders, and we can get that done seamlessly in a very quick way. So clearly, that's been done. As far as, you know, our work with law enforcement is still building, and we're still getting all kind of some of those things worked out. So, and we get that, those services done. But their opportunities clearly are going to be there.
Yeah. Madam Chair, if I, if I can just take one minute, you know, it's, I see out here in the audience, and I got people like Hank, who saw this a long time ago, sheriffs out there, law enforcement, Buck, you know, Commissioners up here, Mr. Martin. This was truly a collaborative effort. And, you know, not only does this help the client, but it helps the client's families, to get them the help they need instead of the incarceration or the hospital, and that, and sucking up huge resources. So I'm very proud of it, and thank you guys for all the work that you've done.
Government can't do it all, but partnerships can work wonders. And so I hope, Mr. Robinson is here. He took the place of the hat lady. With the Alliance. I hope you are sufficiently impressed. Right. Mr. Devlin, I saw you, and I think you got an award at the opening of, the formal opening of Roxy. Thank you so much. Let me see if there are other questions. If not, fantastic job. Thank you. Mental health.
Doug Webster did a lot of the work, really. Honestly, he was the person really behind it.
Since this is a first, and I need you to come around and shake hands, please. Say what? Oh, Doug has something. Oh, I'm sorry!
I was fine with where we're at.
Go ahead.
I just want to talk about the collaboration, exactly what you were saying.
Okay.
This is unique. I've been involved with CIT programs well over 20 years in Florida, Miami Beach, Tampa, Nashville. Nothing compares to here because of what you were saying, the collaboration between Mental Health, Alliance. This morning, with James Martin, he brought the fact up that maybe we ought to talk with Judge Keever and talk to the magistrates. So we made a call to Judge Keever, who took the call, and he doesn't even know this yet. And we proposed that we would like to train the magistrates in CIT, not the full 40 hours, because they don't have that much time, but we'll do it days, weekends, evenings, I don't care when we do it.
Outstanding.
And we'll do Mental Health 101 and some other stuff, because these are the people that are doing involuntary commitments. And if they don't know and understand to the fullest extent, they can't be optimal in what they're doing. So guess what Judge Keever said?
She said yes.
She said absolutely yes. It's a wonderful idea. And literally, it's this kind of snowball, perfect timer for this week, or last week, that these kind of collaborations have taken off like I've never seen anywhere else. I mean, for me, this, this is the pinnacle of what me as a social worker can do. This is collaboration. I hear from Alliance at 10:00 on a Saturday night about a patient that's coming into the emergency room. We have a joke about, you know, the State Farm commercial, "What are you wearing?" And I'll talk with the clinical director at 10:00 about a patient that's coming in. The woman last week, our very first patient, came from Virginia six months ago. Didn't have any medication and didn't have any money. She came in to our 23-hour unit. She was scared. Won't go into the details, but, but she was right on the edge. Took her in, worked with her for a while. Dr. Fleishman came in, saw her, prescribed some medication. Literally, we went 50 feet away to the Medication Assistance Pharmacy. She filled the prescription, carried it back, handed it to the patient. We have mobile crisis who we work with, who was able to visit her the next morning, and she's got an appointment with the center three days later. This is what reduces suffering. And if anything that the U.S. County Commission have done to improve the quality of life for individuals in Cumberland County, this is what you've done. And this is just one of 1,000 stories. And in the first six patients, it was the same story in a different category every single day. So it's incredible. The, you know, we have CIT-trained officers on the site right now. These guys are good, and they're passionate. They like what they're doing. If this is a sign of things to come, it's like, this, this is as good as it can get. So it's really unique. So I thank you all, from, from my perspective, and actually from all the patients that we serve.
Thank you, Doug, and would point out one more time. It can't be iterated too many times, that those particular interventions saved visits to either our Hospital's Emergency Department or our Jail's Emergency Department. And, and those are places that are, that are well-used and overcrowded.
Okay, I'm sure. Official representative to the Alliance Board, our board member, comments, please.
Well, my comments were going to be to this board.
Oh, okay.
I think that, that all of what you said is, is certainly a wonderful thing, and we're very proud of it, as I know you are. But one of the things that each year, some of you are aware that we write up specific programs and collaborations that have taken place in certain areas, and we submit them to the state for recognition at our annual conference. And I think that this would be an excellent opportunity. Sally, you hear, you're listening over there, Sally? To do something that will recognize the efforts of Cape Fear Valley Health System, the Alliance, and the County Commissioners too, for their efforts in providing those services to our, our county. And I think most of you will probably agree with me on that, so.
I think that would be a great move. I cannot pass up this opportunity. Will we please have the CEO of the hospital, along with the two doctors, please come around? Elias, Hank, Buck, and Sheriff. Please come around. That is a success story for citizens, a success story for the health system, for our law enforcement center, our detention center. For mental health, it's a success story all around. This is collaboration as it, at its best. It doesn't get any better than this. Thank you so much. All right. Nominations. Item six is nominations to boards and commissions. Oh, Mr. Evans, I forgot to call on you.
Evans, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Nominations to boards and commissions. Animal Control Board, I'd like to nominate Shelley Bryant and Cindy Collins. All right. Is that what I just named?
You're right.
And there is, Mr., oh, we got a vote. Item seven. Appointments to boards and commissions. Appointment to boards and commissions. We have, for the general public position, County Commissioner appointee, we have... Two vacancies. And three nominees. One is a reappointment. And one is a, the filling of a position vacated by, is a new appointment. All right. We want to separate those and vote for the reappointment first.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Those in favor, for, for the general public position, reappointment, we have Mr. Ernest Curry. I move that he be reappointed. Is that right? Am I doing that right?
That's fine, yeah.
All right. The seconded, those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin, Edge, Chairman Council, Commissioners Faircloth, Keefe, and King.
Mr. Evans?
In favor.
Unanimous.
Okay, unanimous. For the new appointment, we have two nominees, Mr. Wilson Lacy and Mr. Michael Williford. For Mr. Wilson Lacy, those in favor of appointing Mr. Wilson Lacy?
Was that in the form of a motion, Madam Chairman?
I guess it is. It's been so long since we've had one of these, I've forgotten. I move that we appoint Mr. Wilson Lacy. I move that we appoint Mr. Wilson Lacy. Am I doing this correctly?
Yeah. All in favor?
Go ahead.
All right. It's a motion and second. Any questions? Those in favor?
Voting in favor, Chairman Counsel, Commissioners King. Commissioner Evans, may I have your vote, please?
For what, ma'am? Is it favor or against?
I need either favor or against.
Those opposed.
Okay.
In favor or opposed? We have those in favor. We have two in... Okay. And five opposed. Is that right?
That's correct.
It's been a long time since we've had this. To the viewing audience, it's been a very long time since we've had a split and I am a bit rusty. For Mr. Michael Williford, for our new appointment, I need a motion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Mr. Michael Williford be appointed to the county general public position. Those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin Edge, Faircloth Keith, voting in opposition. Chairman Counsel, Commissioner King.
Oh, Mr.?
May I have your vote, please, Commissioner Evans?
Or?
You're in favor of the appointment of Mr. Williford?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So our new appointee is Mr. Attorney, I believe, Michael Williford. There is no item eight. We are not having a closed session. However, I do need to mention that we have agreed to hire the search firm, the Mercer Group from Georgia, Atlanta. Can't find it. It is. The Mercer Group Incorporated Consultants to Management from Atlanta, Georgia, for the manager's search. Yes.
Madam Chairman, just for information, one of the members of that firm used to work for the League of Municipalities here in Raleigh. Just for information.
All right.
Hankins.
Thank you.
Ellis Hankins.
Ellis Hankins. All right. So we will be working with that group. Our search will start, that part of the process will start tomorrow. Thank you so much for watching us on television and for those of you who are in the audience, thank you so much for participating.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. King?
I'd like to offer motion with adjournance.
Second. All in favor of adjournance?
Unanimous. Commissioner President.